And then everyone, today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. It is 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living and justice for all.
All right. First on the agenda, there's some meeting minutes. There's a motion to approve meeting minutes for November 26th, 2024, December 11th, 2024, and December 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't at the 26th, so rather than kind of confuse things, I just won't make a motion. I won't second it. You guys can do it.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out one thing?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you noticed these minutes here, but just a subtle point. We are utilizing ChatGPT or AI to get these minutes moving.
Yep.
I've been talking with Sidney. It's something that she's taken on and taken on that initiative. And it's essentially cut the time in half.
Hard to understand.
I think the detail is just as good, if not better than it's ever been.
Yep.
And so I think the more we can look at using technology to create efficiencies, not only in our office, but within Town Hall, all totaled, is, I think, will be a benefit to everybody because that's the only way we can stretch dollars.
Sure.
Is to create efficiencies. And so thank you, Sidney, for taking that on. We hope to utilize this with other boards.
Yep.
Who have to do minutes, and that's a very cumbersome task. So anyway, good for you, Sidney. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Sidney. All right. Open Town Meeting Warrant. Mr. Kelly, you need a motion to actually open the Town Meeting Warrant?
Yes. Since we published the timeline, and we're going to tentatively close with the vote of the Board on March 18th.
March 18th. All right. Gentlemen, is there a motion to open the fiscal year 26 of Cushinget Annual Town Meeting Warrant with all articles to be submitted to the Town Clerk's Office or the Board of Selectmen's Office by the closing business on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Looks like we have some articles in our book that have already been submitted.
Those don't have to be reviewed. They just will continue to lad as we go.
As we go. Correct.
Some of it is noticed from various departments.
Yeah, there's a couple from the Planning Board I see here. I'd like to run through some details too before, look at them, actually see what's changing on those.
Mr. Chairman, on the Planning Board, articles, there's one comment on the solo bylaw. Review the solo bylaws. They just kicked off their first solo photalic installation under the new bylaw. Definitions definitely need to be added for clarity for the Planning Board.
Perfect. All right. So gentlemen, take a look at these when you get a chance, and if you have any questions, reach out to Mr. Kelly or the department head submitting. All right. Number two, hiring freeze. Mr. Kelly, we are only going to temporarily put a hiring freeze in place, correct, until, barring the Finance Department?
The, once finances clarify and you know if there's going to be layoffs, if it's going to be non-filling and unfunding of vacant positions or what, but is it, number one, it's not fair to hire someone and have to lay him off three months, four months later. And number two, give all that person unemployment.
Mr. Chairman, you know, what do we call it? Hiring freeze, hiring pause, hiring review? I think regardless, it's a good practice. Before we fill a position, we have a conversation and do a critical review of that function.
Mm-hmm.
How it operates, how the overall, you know, business is running. Is it an opportunity to consolidate? Is there an opportunity to divvy out the responsibilities? But I just, you know, I think we've talked about it, to just do the same old, same old, well, the position's open, let's just fill it and not think about it. So however we do this moving forward, any open position, we should review that before deciding whether or not to fill it.
Sure.
You know, the same capacity. I do think there's opportunities to consolidate if we look, if we think hard enough about how to do it, and we're creative and reward people that, you know, want to career advancement.
Yep.
You know, so anyway, that's my thoughts on that.
All right. I will say that we do actually have a couple of appointments tonight for necessary positions. So barring those necessary positions that directly affect the livelihood of the town and the townspeople, just for reference, the appointments that we have later on in the agenda aren't affected by this particular hiring freeze. Is there a motion to implement? There's a motion to establish a temporary prohibition on filing any, filling any vacant positions. In other words, a hiring freeze as of February 26th, 2025. This temporary hiring freeze will not apply to positions within the Finance Departments or other necessary positions.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that being said, we also finally found a great candidate for our Assistant Town Accountant, Jamie Lynn Velasquez. I believe Mr. Gassker and Mr. Kelly had the opportunity to sit down with her, and she's here tonight. Welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourself to everybody and say a few words about yourself?
Yes, my name's Jamie, and I live close by. I live in Freetown. I'm about 18, 19 years. I've worked municipality. I've worked multiple areas. So I have great experience and thorough knowledge of all the laws and know-hows of how they all work. And I look forward to working with everybody in town and seeing how my knowledge can help you guys out.
Mr. Chairman, I was fortunate enough to interview Jamie Lynn. And above all other candidates, she was top-notch. I think the resume speaks for herself.
Certainly does.
And I look forward to having her in this position of Assistant Town Accountant. We all know that vacancies in our Finance Department, so I look forward to having Jamie Lynn fill that void in our Assistant Town Accountant position.
All right. Perfect. There's a motion to appoint Jamie Lynn Velasquez to the position of Assistant Town Accountant, subject to any recruitment negotiations at a salary of $60,000?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie Lynn.
See you tomorrow.
Mr. Kelly, in that regards too, I was informed by the Treasurer Collector that somebody in accounting needs to set up a PAF for her before tomorrow. So I believe whoever has to handle that, if you can get the correct rate over to Jen so she can file that, so there's no hiccups. Police insurance authorization vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would just advise that we do have to talk to steelworkers on that position of our intention to move it forward and have a letter of employment written up to discuss with the union. But under the management rights, we have the authority to do what we're doing tonight.
Yep, absolutely.
It's just something for us to vet out.
Yep.
With the union.
Absolutely.
Make sure we follow for all recall to the contract.
All right. Mr. Kelly, I believe this is just an authorization to expend the insurance proceeds?
In the past, Mr. Chairman, the limit was $50,000. The state has changed the limit and, under advice at council, we discussed with him how that motion, because it's no longer part of the Town Meeting Vote, it's just a vote of the Board of Selectmen. And Town Council said to note the claims, number the amounts, and for the, a basic description of what the claim was to repair.
So where'd the chief go?
Right there.
This, this has already been work performed, correct, Chief?
Yes, yes. Certainly, it was like, I want to say it was like $120,000, I think, in total, somewhere, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yep.
But due to the lightning strike, which happened in May, some things had to be repaired as soon as possible, just because the building itself wasn't safe and the computer systems themselves were, were destroyed.
Right.
So that, that work that was completed, that vendor has been very kind to us, holding that bill for us since June. I think some of the work was done in the end of May, maybe June sometime. And then, once that, the initial thing got completed, some of the gremlins came out, and it was discovered that all of that needs to be fixed also. So that was one of the issues that we, we ran into. But we certainly, by authorizing this, by you guys doing this, we can pay them. And then we still have a lot more work that has to be completed because some of the stuff that's, some of the hardware that's in there is end of life. It was put in there when the building was first up and running. So.
I think we carried some of that equipment from the old unit two.
I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't, you know? I wouldn't be surprised if we did.
So moving forward, we can have our IT look at certain things that need to be done?
We have an agreement, we have a service agreement with, with the companies that do our work now, you know what I mean? So it's just a matter of replacing the stuff that needs, that's our end of life, which is critical because it's essentially duct taped and zip-tied right now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to authorize the Chief of Police to expend the proceeds for the insurance payments, Claims Number 22628573, in the amount of $15,441.13 dated 7/5/2024, and Claim Number 22628573, in the amount of $105,515.10 dated 1/9/2025, for a total of $120,956.23 for repairs for the equipment damage during the lightning strike.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
I would like the Board to know that the Chief and Sergeant Fons fought like hell with the insurance company and worked with our insurance agents to fight like hell with the insurance company. I think it was some insurance company of South Carolina.
Yeah, of course, it's never anybody, right, you know, right down the street.
That, and they increased the amount substantially from the original offer. And I think the Board should know that it was yeoman work, and they did great work doing that.
I remissed if I didn't push that back on Sergeant Fons because he was our contact person. Jeremy, I appreciate all the work, and certainly the Board does.
Thank you. We appreciate that because I believe the original offer was substantially lower, wasn't it?
Yes.
That's good. Good work. All right. Next up, Police Sergeant Appointment. So, under Chief Richmond, we were able to authorize the gentlemen and ladies of the official police force to take the sergeant's exam. And it looked like we had a total of, what, seven that took it?
Seven off, yeah, seven took it.
Seven that took it off?
And, yeah, six, we have six, six that passed, I believe.
Excellent. So for me personally, I can say that the exemplary records of every officer in this town means a lot to me, and means a lot to the public. And I've had conversations with every one of you, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for protecting our town, my family, and everybody around here. And I look forward to working with you guys for a very long time ahead. So as the Board of Selectmen, we are to review the top three scores of the sergeant's exam. Top three scores were Adam Hebert, Ryan Hemphill, and Courtney Soars. Chief, I'm going to turn this over to you. Tell us a little bit about the process and.
Well, I mean, you pretty much hit the nail right on the head. So September, we had the exam, but Civil Services, as you guys certainly know, and if anybody out there that doesn't understand, that it's a process. So the officers that took the test, in September, the grades were finalized by Civil Service in January. Once former Chief Richmond left, and I was moved into, into his current role, that left a void in the, in a patrol sergeant's, I guess, slot, if you will. And the grades came out. I notified you guys as soon as it was certified that we have a list, and I'd like to, you know, move forward. You guys took the ball from there. We're finally here tonight. The three gentlemen that are on the list that you mentioned are Officer Adam Hebert, Detective Ryan Hemphill, and Officer Courtney Soars. I'll just give you just a real brief synopsis, in no particular order. Officer Hebert graduated from the Training Council's Police Academy in 2018. Currently holds a master's degree in criminal justice, and he works patrol eight to four. Detective Hemphill graduated from the Police Academy in '16. He's got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's currently in the detective division, as I mentioned. Officer Soars was, we were able to get a great candidate through a lateral transfer. She was, worked at Pittsburgh State University Police. She worked there for a couple of years. We were able to grab her in 2023, and she also holds a master's in criminal justice. So quite honestly, it's a win-win for the town. Any candidate out of the three that you choose is going to fit seamlessly in that role. And they're all here tonight.
A heck of a candidate pool.
No, no, no. It's, it's, and you know, quite honestly, when we go, if we go further down, it's, it's, you're going to see the same, you know what I mean? You'll see the same thing.
Yep.
The candidate pool, as it moves down, is even better. You know what I mean? It's just, the reason the Civil Service will give you the, the particular order that you mentioned is, is basically the scores. You know what I mean? And they rank them by, by score.
Yep.
If, if, like I said, all three are here tonight, if you have anything for them, feel free to shoot at them or, but you guys are the hiring authority when it comes to this. I can't just say, yeah, I want all three, unfortunately. Because you just put a hiring freeze. I think you did it on purpose. But, but yeah, like I said, three.
Technically, they were already hired, so.
Well, that's true, but I mean, I'd love to make them all sergeants right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll touch base on what Chief Karub just said, right? So we have a, you three individuals particularly have a unique opportunity at the timing of the sergeant's exam, right? If you look forward in the department, you look at things that the, the way the ball's moving right now, this list is good for two years, right? So me being me, I could look forward and say, there's probably a really good opportunity, regardless whoever's chosen tonight. All three, I would believe, at some point in the next two years can make that promotion to sergeant, right?
I agree.
I think the way we look at, you know, knowing what I know about the department and seeing the way the ball's bouncing right now, there's, there's a really good chance and this list is good for two years.
Yes.
It's only a month old. So regardless of who that choice may be, keep your chin up, keep doing the job that you've been doing over your careers here in Acushnet. And I can honestly say, as Mr. Inkley said, God bless all of you for doing what you do, right?
And it's two years, sorry, Mr. Gassker, but it is two years from the date it was certified, not when they took it in September.
That's correct. It's only a month old.
In January, it'd be two years.
Roughly a month old.
Yeah.
Right? So I mean, basically two full years, right? So going back to what I was saying, God bless all of you for doing the job that you do every day in protecting the citizens of Acushnet and elsewhere in the surrounding area. Kudos to all of you. You all deserve it. We only have one position at this point. As we look forward, we'll see what happens. But again, I do believe there's an opportunity moving forward over the next two years that, you know, both of you can make it into that spot, whoever it may be, the last two. That opportunity's still there. So keep your chin high, continue doing the hard work that you do, and opportunities will come for whoever the two are that aren't given the opportunity tonight to be promoted to sergeant.
Thank you.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, if you want a motion, I can, Mr. Lona doesn't have anything to say?
Oh, I mean, this is how I feel about the Police Department, Fire Department, like, when we have these promotions, whether we get into the chief and sergeant, it's like me having to pick who my favorite kid is, right? And I don't, and I say that, like, and I don't use the kid, the term kid pejoratively, like, you know, you're all important to the town, all important to me personally. I see a lot of you grow in the position, and that's really great to see. So, you know, whoever we decide today, again, it's based on, when I look at it, you take a test for a reason, and everybody has a great credentials, based on the score. But as Mr. Gassper said, if you don't get it tonight, hang in there. Plenty of opportunity to grow. We just ask that you stick, stick with us, right? And it may be tempting to go elsewhere, but we hope that's not the case.
I think the Chief will agree with me when I say this, that when I look at this department now, there's great camaraderie in that department, right? So many of you get along with each other, right? And you help each other out in day-to-day operations, whatever it may be, filling in for each other, whatever it may be. I don't think I've seen it like this since I've been around. So kudos to all of you folks that are really making this department click the way it's clicking, right? It's, it's incredible for me to be able to see it and actually have a good place in my heart where I believe in it now, right? It's not that I didn't believe in it before. It's just when I look at my officers in my side, it's in my PD, it's incredible to see what I see today, right? So just, that's why I want everybody's self-esteem to stay high, all you folks to keep, keep your self-esteem high, and just continue doing what you're doing, and continue to make this department a great department. Because truly, I believe, we have one of the best.
I agree.
Based on that, it is not easy making a decision whenever we get to this point, but based on that, and based on the higher score, I would make a motion to appoint Adam Hebert as the next sergeant of the Acushnet PD, effective March 2nd, 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your effort moving this forward. It was well, you know, well-measured.
I had to get a deep dive into Civil Service and how it works, so.
Oh, geez.
For all the confusion and.
You figured it out, let me know.
There's a, there's a lot of in-depth work dealing with Civil Service, so, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
Did you get the, did you sign the document?
Oh, not yet.
All right, so.
The one that gave you right before the movie?
Yeah, we've got a block scheduled tomorrow morning with Civil Service to make sure that the mentor from Civil Service walks us through a number of actions.
Okay.
To get this done.
Okay.
And other things.
Let's get it done.
And Mr. Hebert, I know, I know you're not this kind of guy, but I'm going to give you some advice that a very wise man once gave me. Regardless of your success, don't ever forget where you came from, right? That's the best advice I could ever give to anybody, right? And you've earned everything that you've been, you worked so hard, and you've earned every step of the way to get to where you are today. So congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Ryan and Courtney, I meant what I said, right? Chins up, just keep moving forward, and the opportunity's going to be there in the future, trust me when I tell you that.
All right. Gentlemen, we have a Planning Board Clerk Letter of Resignation, Haley Souza, writing to inform you of my decision to resign from a position as senior clerk, my final date of employment. It's February 13th, 2025. I appreciate the opportunities and experiences gained during my time here. I concluded that it's time for me to continue my career elsewhere. Is there a motion to accept Haley Souza's letter of resignation with regret?
So moved.
Second.
Yes?
Second. This is a position that we're talking about. All right, let's look at how it fits within the overall orbit up there. It's their way to consolidate with other departments that are cross pollinating. So anyway, this is the perfect example of that.
I agree. I think there's been enough comments made about the Planning Board Clerks, you know, the hours that are really needed to do the job. So I think this is a unique opportunity to look at that and look at other positions, clerk positions, and merge.
I'm all for it. Obviously, we had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, we have a, an opportunity at this point. We all know financial situations dictate how we have to help run the town. So anytime we can consolidate, save some money, and move forward without losing services, I think it's a great thing. All right. All right. Community Preservation Committee, as you know, has a couple of vacancies for sitting current board members. One of them happens to be for a sitting Planning Board member. So is there a motion to appoint Brian DeChamps as a Planning Board Representative for the Community Preservation Committee?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We also have a letter of resignation from Historical Commission Member Nancy Baveros. Nancy's been an active member of many communities in this town for many years. And she has some stuff happening where she needs to put her time somewhere else. So I would ask for a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Nancy Baveros on the Historical Commission.
With regret.
With regret.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll go back and forth here. We have a Citizen Interest Form from Robert Conklin. Mr. Conklin has actually asked to be on a few committees, but also as an election official. I spoke with the Town Clerk, and Pam is still in need of election officials. So Mr. Conklin would like to be on the Agricultural Commission as an alternate, the Beautification Committee, and as an election official. So I'd ask for a motion.
Motion to appoint Mr. Conklin to the Agricultural Committee as an alternate, motion to appoint to the Beautification Committee, and motion to appoint as an elected official, election official.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one sec. Is it Mr. Conklin from Mataploza Road?
Yes.
Can I, while, while we're here, if I would, if you guys had driven by the police station earlier in the summer, and you saw how it was overgrown and a mess, and Mr. Conklin came in and volunteered with his girlfriend.
Really?
And he's the one that did all of that, everything.
Wow.
Everything. So I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of that.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to say that because he asked me not to give him any recognition.
Well, I, I, we, I mean.
It's fine, you can do what you want.
It looks great.
And I kept my word.
I know he doesn't want recognition, but I, he deserves, he and his girlfriend certainly deserve it. I mean, they did.
Two incredible individuals for the work that they did there. I seen it. I stopped and talked. I mean, they're just incredible individuals that did that work for us, yeah.
It was, it was all, he, he, he wouldn't, he was, he was fantastic. I just wanted to, since you were talking about, I want to make sure, I know there's only one, you know, Robert Conklin, but I wanted to make sure it wasn't somebody that, give somebody else credit.
And for the record, he spilled the beans.
But he's packing it.
Well, that's good. So Mr. Conklin, Sidney, if you can get him all three of his appointment letters, appreciate it. And thanks again to Mr. Conklin. All right.
Mrs. Labonte is on vacation for two weeks, but she did may reach out to the moderator to, to swear people in that need to be sworn in. So I don't know how that conversation ended up with her, but if you want to just let Robert know that, you know, he, he's going to make arrangements with the moderator and speak to the Town Clerk's Office on when that availability is going to be.
Perfect.
To be sworn in. It'll be done by the moderator. Okay?
Excellent. All right. Moving on to golf. All right. So we have a, a couple of surplus items that Mr. Tibbous has asked us to put in for a surplus. The only thing is that I didn't get was, okay, two, oh, yeah, he did, yeah, he did put condition codes on. So we have a surplus Smithco Sprayer, Star 3180 Turf Sprayer, a surplus Falcon 16.5 Covered Boom. He did follow up with an email afterwards saying that these two pieces do not work with any of our newer equipment, and at this point are just taking up space. any of our newer equipment, and at this point are just taking up space and ask that they be turned over surplus.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
We, we had the discussion for the sprayer, then I went down and took a look at it, right? We decided to buy a new one, and we said that we put it on a mini bid to see, and he said the trade-in value was only like $4,000, so I figured it'd be worth a shot. Throwing it out there, putting a minimum bid or whatever, double that number, $8,000, and see where the bid goes. If it doesn't go anywhere, we'll figure out another way, or either that, take the trade-in at $4,000. So if we can figure out a way to get that up and going, and that other boom thing that he's talking about from weight, that doesn't, isn't retrofit to sprayers, especially now the new Toro, I don't know anything about that. We'll look at that and see if Mr. Tibbels has an idea of the value of that and put it on at the same time.
Well, according to the condition code, this listing is new or unused, so...
Correct.
I'm sure there's a, uh, somebody out there that could use...
Yeah.
Whatever a Falcon 16.5 covered boom is, so, you know...
Right. We'll just have to look it up to see what the values are, right?
Correct.
And then put them both on.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And for auction, and let it go.
Yep, I agree. Do you need a motion for that?
You need a motion that says what the resolution is? Read the resolution. Third page.
Resolution to declare items as surplus, whereas the Town of Acushnet is the authority to declare items as surplus that are no longer deemed necessary or adequate to properly perform the duties of government as prescribed by law, and whereas the Town of Acushnet Golf Committee requests approval from the Board of Selectmen, it is clear the attached list of items as surplus property and properly dispose of them. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Acushnet meeting in regular session this day. That is, this board hereby approves the disposal of the attached list of surplus property.
That's the motion, is there a second?
So moved.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. All right. List them up, see what happens. All right. So we have, next, the Clubhouse Project Architectural Firm approval. So this is something that the Golf Management Committee started looking into well before we expanded and kicked off the Clubhouse Subcommittee or Exploratory Committee, so to speak, and they went for RFP, correct, Mr. Kelly, on this? And this is the company that they landed on?
This is the company that was chosen in competitive.
It's kind of a bummer we don't have anybody here that was involved in the process, Mr. Chairman, but I reviewed everything, and I know that there were some comments made to me about the last Golf Committee meeting about, you know, solo coverage of a parking lot, it's paving and all that, and I said, oh, that's not what the task at hand was, right? It was first and foremost, look at building a new clubhouse. It's fine that if, if the Golf Committee and Exploratory Committee wants to look at alternates and things of the like, but this proposal from this company does not integrate any of that extra work into that proposal. The only thing this does say is Acushnet River Valley Golf Course Committee, right? And then, like you said, we formed the Exploratory Committee for the clubhouse, so I think just for a correction in this, it needs to be done with the Golf Committee and the Exploratory Committee. To review things, right? If the Exploratory Committee's there to give input on what you feel a clubhouse should be, I don't know how they're operating right now, if they're just gonna continue joint meetings for clubhouse, or they're gonna do separate things, whatever they're gonna do, I just think it's important that you don't disregard the input from the Exploratory Committee, right? So, it's, somebody's gonna communicate with both of those committees on how they're gonna move forward and kind of stay in sync with each other with communications.
So we have, Mr. Kelly, if you can, reach out to Chairman Flynn, and I believe...
This is a, yeah, this is a contract with the town, so it would be with the Board of Selectmen.
With the Board of Selectmen, so ultimately, you just communicate that, all right?
No, that's fine, it's just language, any about them talking only to one.
Correct.
Right? And I don't know if that's really the objective. It's fine to go into them, but I think the other, the Exploratory Committee...
Yeah.
Input, 'cause it's talking about designing and layout and all of that stuff, that's part of the Exploratory Committee, I believe.
And I'm, I'm sure they'd be okay with changing this language, like I said, I believe this, this was facilitated before we put together the Exploratory...
You could actually just instruct the Golf Management Committee to instruct them, and make both of them your representatives...
Yeah, all right.
...with the contractor, because the contractor is...
That's fine, it's working.
Contractor, let's chat.
It's a communication thing, Mr. Hinkley.
Yep.
And sometimes, some people are just not good at communicating, right? That's why I'm trying to bring it up now, to make sure that communication line stays open.
Absolutely. Is there a motion to accept the Clubhouse Project Architectural Firm?
Not to exceed $25,000?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe the, um, Exploratory Committee has their first meeting this week, they're voting on chair, vice chair, and their, the agenda looked like they actually put together a nice, solid objective, so I think, I think it will move pretty well. Right. Gentlemen, we had, lost our Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator a few months back. Trying to replace a full-time outreach coordinator seemed to be kind of tricky, and Ms. Golda seemed to find two people to split the, uh, split the difference essentially, so rather than having one person working 18 hours individually, they're gonna split, proposing to reduce the position to 16 hours weekly, and then split it between two candidates. So, she's asking for a motion.
Both are qualified.
Both are extremely qualified.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Patricia Medurski to the position of Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator at a salary of $20 per week for eight hours per week, and I'll make a motion to appoint Samantha Ortiz to the position of Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator, salary $20 per hour for eight hours a week.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, next thing on here, it's just me wanting to say something out loud on record, utility company, utility company declaration. I said call to action, because I'm getting awfully frustrated with the back and forth from the utility companies without much of an explanation. As you know, our representative from Eversource sent us an email for us to tell everybody that there's ways that you can ask for help on your utility bill, and I replied that residents shouldn't have, have to ask for help, and said pass it up the line. These constant increases, I understand that every business has to make money, but when it gets to the point where people can't afford electric and gas anymore, and you see it all over the news, the state government is now insisting, the DPU's insisting that the utility company reduce the gas delivery fees by five to 10% after they just went up 20 to 30, and I also believe that the DPU is officially in charge at approving any delivery charges on utility bills. So, ultimately, I wanna really focus on, and I want to bring this to your attention too, if they're gonna ask us to communicate with our residents, and we're gonna sit here and let them come into our town and insist on having poll hearings and not listen to us, I've spoken with Verizon multiple times, got six different reps, all saying they're gonna take care of these double poll issues, I want it on record that if the utility company's not gonna play nice with us, we shouldn't play nice with them. And it's not me putting my foot down, it's asking for something in return. If they're gonna pass all this on to our residents, I would like them to at least make the residents feel like they're heard, and do something about our double polls, and I'd also like them to explain why they have to go up 10%, 20% every year, and not replace services such as gas mains and lines and stuff like that. So it's just me yelling out into the wind and hoping it lands in the right ears.
I'll support you.
It's a bunch of horse manure is what it is, because even the DPU coming backward, oh, we're, we're asking the utility companies to reduce it by 5%, so that's great, keep you $5, 'cause for every hundred bucks you're charging me, you're gonna take $5 off. That's not helping anyone. That's a joke. I mean, really? This is what they're doing, to say, oh, we, we did something to help you? Come on. It's an absolute sin what they've done.
Anytime you're in a situation where you have a regulated monopoly and you don't have another choice, we're kind of stuck, where we don't have any way to fight back without just saying it out loud over and over again until somebody listens.
Eversource has roughly 650,000 natural gas users in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If somebody's bill's up $100 year over year on delivery charges, you do the math, $65 million a month, right? On just that $650,000 number, do the math, by 12 months, it comes out to $780 million that they're banging everybody. Like, what's the justification? Almost a billion dollars a year, just in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Absolutely no excuse for it.
Correct. Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing me out.
I got my vote.
All right. Rural Town Designation, Selectman Warner, you asked for this to be on here?
Yeah. So, first of all, I just want to share with you all that, a new state rep, Mark Sylvia, guys hit the ground running. I mean, the guy's fantastic, I get, I'm sure you get emails and texts, I get every week a check in, here's what I'm working on, so on and so forth, and I'm talking with Mark, Representative Sylvia, about rural towns, we were operating under the assumption that Acushnet was designated a rural town. Well, guess what? You would think. We are not. It's a formula that we do not fit in, and so, as a rural town, you're, you're open to a lot of benefits, whether it's, you know, regional school district reimbursement, other grant opportunities, so on and so forth, so I wanted to share with you that. He's requested that former Senator Ann Goby, who heads up the rural town program for the state, she's gonna come to Acushnet, I believe, in March, to do a tour of Acushnet and take that information back, so once we get that date pinned down, let the board know, you know, we can all attend, we might have to post it, but, you know, I think it's something that Representative Sylvia, I'm sure there's other towns out there that probably fall in this weird basket, like Acushnet, you know, we're not a gateway city, we're not a rural town, we're not a rich town, we're stuck in the middle, and we don't get the benefits of that, you know, the, the freebies that some of the other municipalities, so hopefully we can try and see if we can rectify this, either with some type of legislation or expanding the criteria, whatever it might be. It just seems nonsensical and that we're not a rural town, and, you know, maybe when the program was created 26 years ago, or whenever it was, the criteria was very narrow, right? So...
I don't think we're that far off, because after, after I started diving into this, it's not that far off at all for a population to be designated that.
Right.
And for a town that was built on agriculture, and apple orchards and peaches and farms in general, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not be.
Right, right. And I just think, you know, this is an example, is it gonna be a game changer for us? Probably not, but, you know, if we take the approach that we have to look under every single rock and look for, whether it's inefficiencies or opportunities, I know Mr. Gasper on the finance side is always looking to make things better, Bob, you've looked at it from an operation standpoint, and, you know, how we can make things better, so, you know, to any of the town departments, think, think creatively, and look for programs or grants that we're missing out on, because, you know, we're not a rural town, I don't know Chief Carew, and, you know, from a police department standpoint, if we had a rural town designation, would that open us up to, you know, more grants on the police side of things? I don't know. But anyway, it's just something, small thing, but something I want to make you, make you aware of.
Cool. I hear Rep. Sylvia's already started looking into it?
Yep, yep.
I will say that Rep. Sylvia, I'm really glad that he immediately started doing town office hours at the Council on Aging, and he's checked in multiple times with me. He reached out actually to speak, I won't hand out anybody's phone number ever without permission, but he did want to get in touch with Chief Carew to sit down with him, he already sat down with Chief Farland, and he really wants to understand what Acushnet's about, which I appreciate, so. Back to some old business here, Town Administrator Search.
Mr. Chairman, happy to speak on this, if you permit. I mean, I know, at the last, we've had this on the agenda for probably about a month now, Mr. Kelly provided us with a number of potential job descriptions, you know, and I think that's great, but, I mean, we, we all know what the town, what a town administrator does, and I appreciate the effort, but I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. We've got, you know, the last time we went, we did this, we, I think we had a pretty good description of what the town administrator should be doing. I think we gotta get this out into MMA and get this thing advertised, you know, we've, the last go-around, you know, the job pays $142, I don't think, if we go, if we try to go below that, I don't think we're gonna get anybody qualified that can serve to do what we need to do, so I think we've gotta set that, you know, at a minimum, $142, and if we just advertise it at that, or we could go to $145, whatever it is, I don't think we need to wring our hands too much about that, but I do think we're gonna get this thing out the door into the public domain and start seeing what we have for candidates. I don't want to be in a situation where Mr. Kelly's leaving, and then we're stuck. We've got ample time to, to get a candidate, find a candidate, and if we find, we don't find anybody, then we go back to the drawing board, but I don't, we need to continue to wring our hands over job descriptions, pretty clear-cut.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
So as far as salary goes, you've always, in my opinion, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Kelly, based on candidates that are out there for other positions that we've interviewed, you, you, you open that bar up, right? You never confine yourself to a small plus or minus, because you don't know, depending on qualifications, if you advertise a job at $140 to $145, you're stuck paying in that range. So if the, the goal of the board is to say, you know, $145 is high, then I would make a recommendation, you, you drop the lower end of it, depending on qualifications, and it gives you that flexibility when you're negotiating with an individual, much better negotiations than strapping yourself to the $135 or $145 range, right? You just don't know what's out there. I can tell you based on watching what's happened in other communities, there's not a whole lot of good out there, right? And you're gonna confine yourself by advertising by that range, and then I've had Mr. Kelly correct certain advertisements for other positions, and say you need to open that range up, right, and give that opportunity. So that's, you know, my, my opinion is, go further to the lower end, you can keep the higher end, wherever you want to keep the higher end, in case you get somebody, you know, that's good. Elon Musk wants to apply, and he's a rocket scientist, and you want to pay him $150, so be it, right? That's that, and I think that you really need to take a look at this book, because the Town Charter is a description of what the town administrators' qualifications are, and I've seen us, and again, we've done it to ourselves a number of times, we shoot ourselves in the foot by putting master's degree, PhDs for jobs that don't warrant degrees, right? And if you look at the Town Charter, it says under the Town Administrator, quite simply, qualifications, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Town Administrator for the term of not more than three years, fix his compensation with the amount appropriated by the town, he shall be a person especially fitted by education, training, or previous experience in public administration to perform the duties of his office. We did however go in, in 2017 and get an act, House Number 1409, that we struck out the third sentence with the, the clause where it says, you have to 12 months, you have to be, live in the Town of Acushnet, and it goes on to say, he shall devote full-time to the office and shall not hold any other public office elective or appointive, nor engage in any other business or occupation during his term. There you go for qualifications, plain and simple, right? Again, you start throwing master's degrees and all this cockamamie degrees, Cs and Ds get degrees, doesn't mean that you will be a good person and you're good at doing a job. The Town Charter specifically gives us qualifications, follow the Town Charter, in my opinion. It's all, it's all, it's all there, right? I, I don't think we need to turn this into, you stop putting master's degrees, and you don't have that flexibility, which our Town Charter gives flexibility to that position, you're confining yourself to somebody who has a degree, and quite honestly, the way I look at it, I think somebody that's out there that might have 10, 15 years but doesn't have a master's degree, or whatever degree you want to call it, could be better fit, so now you're limited to pull again to the people that might apply for, apply for the job. So I, I'm all set with advertising jobs, putting handcuffs on this board, and not being able to move and do anything with it, so it's fine that we want to be in, you know, the salary range up at the whatever end, we want to peg that at, my preference is put a big range on it and, and drop it down to a low range, you don't know what you're gonna get, and it all depends on your qualifications, right? So you have that flexibility in salary, and your qualifications are sitting right there. We did have, in 2017, we did strike out the residency clause by special act.
Well, I mean, truthfully, I feel like the range should be in that $140 to $145. Okay, well, I mean, truthfully, I feel like the range should be in that 140 to 150 range, or 135 to 150.
There's the legislation.
Just based on reality, and, you know, if we want to strike the BA required, we could say BA, MA desirable but not required. I mean, that would open, that would send a message, that would open things up. I have no problem with that. So I have no issue with that.
I just think we need to follow the guidelines of the Charter. To put that on there is, you know, an added bonus if you have a BA or whatever, that's fine, but.
Yeah, you're saying desirable but not required, and I think that would.
Yeah. I'm open to that for the salary range. I mean, who cares? You know what? You could, you could do it at the, whatever, the 145, we're pretty close to that right now in the budget anyways, right? We're talking about budget constraints and deficits again, and, you know, this person wants $400,000, that person wants $1 million, when you only have $900,000 to balance a budget, we'll figure that out again this year, I guess. But again, you've got to keep the fiscal matters of the town at hand when you're doing this, and we can see.
So the range of 135 to 145?
D O Q, magic letters.
You can, if you, whatever, you want to go lower on the bottom end, it's, it's, it's up to you. I mean, now you're stuck at the, again, you might not, you might find a really good person in, in 125, they say, I'll take the job for 120. I don't know.
So 125 to 145?
That's fine.
I want to move it along.
Just follow the Charter when you put the advertisement, and I would like before you advertise this thing, that the Board of Selectmen review the advertisement before you send it off.
So there's a draft in your folder?
Yeah, I seen that, and I don't care for it. That's why I brought the Town Charter, so we can make sure that the qualifications fits more to our Town Charter.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, I'll amend it. We can just amend that last sentence, instead of BA, MA desirable, comma, but not required.
So I like going back to the 2020, 2021 advertisement too, where it actually says the position's responsibilities are defined in the Chapter Five of the General Bylaws, and it actually listed, so if we could add that too, because that directs it to the Charter, and that's just, I mean, that'd be good for anybody to read and understand anyway, so.
It's Chapter Five of the Town Charter. You can't circumvent the Town Charter.
Yep.
So the Town Charter is there for a reason. If you want to change the Town Charter, then you have to do a special act like we just did. Right? We don't have the authority just to make things up, so.
So if we can get the draft revised, were those amet, were those amendments?
Give it to me, a copy of it, and we'll submit it to the board next meeting.
The Charter, qualifications, right there.
Yeah, you can.
As Mr. Warner said, add the BA if you want, you know, that's.
Can we vote to have it posted, subject to the board's final review? I don't think we need to vote on it again.
Yeah, if we do it that way and we say that, then once we see the draft, you can show us the draft individually and we got.
We'll all initial it, so we can see it. We'll all initial it, and that'll be a published document, and then we can get the advertisement out.
So what was the motion you just made in this moment?
Motion to post town administrator's position, set the salary range between 135 and 145, 125 and 145, and to add town administrator BA, MA desirable but not required.
And just put that.
Town Charter.
Put that in.
Reference to Town Charter.
Yeah. I think, I think it's important, you put, he shall be a person especially fitted by education, training, or previous experience in public administration to perform the duties of the office. It's one sentence.
Yep.
And it's very clear cut. People understand it, and you don't have, you know, some yo-yo putting in his resume and going through hamburger flippers to look for a town administrator. You've seen enough of that. I've surely seen enough of that. I don't want to waste any more of my time screening applicants that aren't qualified for positions. And I'm sure Mr. Kelly's probably tired of doing it as well. Because he's seen a lot more than I have.
Ask for a modified version of what the motion you just made. How about a motion?
How about the President of the United States did french fries?
Mr. Kelly will put it together, we'll review it, we can, we can do a little change around if we want to say, just, just fine initially, if you're fine with it, if not, then you put it in a little sentence, and Mr. Kelly can call up and say, Mr. Chairman of the Board, put this sentence in, are you guys okay with it? Yep, okay. Put it that way initially, that's all, done.
So I think the most important thing is getting a salary range.
You don't need to complicate.
Correct.
Yeah.
Cool. You got a motion to set the salary range at 125 to 145?
So moved.
Second.
Put something together, Mr. Kelly. You know, let's, Dave, I, I like what you said, let's put a timeline. Mr. Kelly can have that done by the end of the week. Okay, very good.
Should be an easy one. So there's a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, perfect, thank you. That book looks like it's been around for a while, Kelly.
Yeah, I've been waiting for my new updated one. That one's in 2008. I'm still waiting. It's all right.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right. Department Board Fee Schedule. We're still waiting on a couple of departments. We've gotten quite a few. What I happened to notice was everybody that is submitting is comparing with surrounding communities, what the current is and what the proposed is. I think there's a lot of information to go through. So I would suggest, I think we put a timeline, we went on March 5th meeting anyway, to review this, but I just wanted to make sure you guys had what has been updated, fee schedules, and if you guys have any questions too, by all means, bring them up, because I don't want any conflicting ones. And I think there might be some in here, going back and forth through all these. Some of them look pretty straightforward though.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation for a second time?
Sure.
So I believe when we discuss this matter, I ask for all departments responsible for permitting fees and licensing fees, and the such that each individual department submit only for their department. So if we can do this exercise one more time, and have each department submit their permitting and licensing fees to the Board of Selectmen, and I want it signed by the department head. So I want to see Planning Board, Concom, GPW, Building Department, Town Car, whoever does fees and permits and licensing, whoever's got that under the jurisdiction, put it together, submit as an individual department. So there was one, one of the samples in here I looked at, I obviously noticed it because it was on the gas permitting, and sewer tie-in is not on the gas permitting and is not on the jurisdiction of the Building Department, and it's far from being correct. So I don't know how a sewer tie-in got mixed into that table, but those are the kind of things that I'm talking about, right? It's got a sewer tie-in of $50, it's $625, and then you have a connection fee of $6,000. So it's not 50 bucks. So if we're going to be voting permitting fees and licensing fees from each individual department, separate spreadsheets from each one, and we can go through and vote them, each department. So Mr. Kelly, once again, I will ask you if you can send out a memo to everyone, each individual department, and when they're done putting their fee schedule together for what is its purpose, current fee schedule, proposed fee schedule, other communities, so we can see where we're at, and have them sign it. So we have documentation that it came from that department.
Now you got me wondering if, I'm wondering if the Building Department has been charging the DPW a fee.
No, because DPW does their job, and they've been reviewing everything, and they do every year when they set a budget, they know exactly what they're doing. I'm confident in that.
Excellent. All right. Good enough.
I'm just concerned with the paperwork that I've received.
Perfect. All right.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, we got fiscal '26 draft town department budgets.
We.
I don't see any budgets to look over right now.
We, we have had, accounting has loaded this week, the changes from Fall Town Meeting, so we will be able to produce budgets that actually show any transfers, and will also be able to show the updated expenditures as Mr. Gasper and I discussed with, in each department. So, and we have the books set up, and we have in some cases, multiple options of possible budgets in the future for the board to look at and tell the staff or make decisions yourselves on which way to go.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gasper.
On that subject matter, I think it goes back again to what Mr. Warner's been talking about, right? Years ago, we've always done it, where you, when the town administrator and Finance Department submits to the FinCom come January, February, you always see a year-to-date expenditure, right? So I asked Mr. Kelly this year to go back to that, because it tells FinCom and it tells us exactly where somebody's at within their budget, right? And it's a guessing game. And if you look at free cash, again, it's up there, right? Where you look at free cash, a lot of that is turnback, right? So we need to start scrutinize these budgets along with FinCom, because that's what I used to do on FinCom from 2005 to '10. That's, that was one of my benefits, is to be able to look at where somebody's at. If you have a budget and it says in a line, I know, $50,000, you have seven months through the year, and you only expended $10,000, it's a red flag for somebody on FinCom to say what's going on with it. Some people that Mr. Kelly and I have talked to said, we don't incur those expenditures until the second half of the year. That's fine, as long as you get that explanation, right? But other than that, I mean, that's what we call fluff, right? So I think that's the reason, you know, Mr. Kelly's updating the budgets.
Yep.
And we're taking a hard look at that moving forward. I think it'll tell us along, along with FinCom, a lot of, you know, if there's cuts, that's what we need to go look at, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Do you have anything?
Mr. Gasper?
I don't think I have anything. Mr. Chairman?
I got one. I'd like to say congratulations to one of our longtime firefighter fighters, Mark Pinyankos and his wife, for the birth of their very healthy baby boy. So congratulations to Mark and Jay. Other than that, I have nothing. And we got a couple of executive sessions to get through tonight, gentlemen. We have an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and the Board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. We also have executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining fire grievance. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and the Board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. And executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30K, subsection 21A3, to discuss